All right, we should be good to go.
I want to welcome everybody to the Munster Town Council regular meeting Monday, June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Wendy, could you please call it over?
Counselor Hawford.
Here.
Counselor Gardner.
Present.
Counselor Nellens.
Present.
Counselor Peterson.
Here.
And I'm noting for the record, Counselor Peterson is virtual and Counselor Shinkin.
Here. If I could have everybody please rise, a moment of silence for all our loved ones and we'll call it up by the pledge of agent Pete. Thank you, everybody that is here. And I see we have Mr. Gordon's government class. Is that right? Okay, you guys got to be up in the front, he said. No? Okay. So with that, we're going to have a public comment, all public comment. It's limited to two minutes with a total of twenty minutes allotted for public comment section. All speakers must sign in the public speaker sign in form prior to speaking. Please make all comments civil, constructive, and related to public policy issues. At their discretion, council may allow public comment to extend past twenty minutes, but not required to do so. All rules for public comment are posted outside the main meeting room. And with that, I'm going to start public comment.
Mr. President, before you get started, I do want to make an announcement. I am not with all of you this evening, and I regret that. The reason I'm not here is I am experiencing a condition called Bell's Palsy, which is caused by the latent chicken virus, chickenpox virus that we all got when we were kids. I've consulted with my physician. I'm told that it's something that I'll have to endure for possibly the next couple of weeks. During that time, I will probably be attending council activities remotely. It is affecting my vision and a portion of my face, but I am optimistic and hopeful for a quick recovery and to be back with all of you very soon.
Thank you, Jonathan, and please take care of yourself and get well soon.
Thank you.
I could hear that, but if Mr. Peterson has additional comments throughout the meeting, I think I'd like to bring a speaker closer so I could hear maybe a little bit better.
I think we'd have to move it
over here.
Over to this computer. So we'll think, we'll figure it out. We'll get there. Just be patient with us today with our, we've got a new system coming and not all the pieces are here for the for the microphone system and.
But I would agree with Counselor Gardner. If I was asked to testify on what was said, I didn't hear all the words.
Okay.
And we're working this out.
Yep.
And with that, do we have anybody else that wants to go up? You know, just move on up, sign the sign your name and address on the podium first.
Sign bledgeably, please, to all of you. I do come back and use them.
And with that, you are in your address, please.
Okay, um, this is to address something that I had to address with the town council.
Okay, we need your name and your address.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, all right. Yes, I can vote.
Yeah, sorry.
Chris Hansen, address eighty-three twelve Columbia Avenue. So I addressed this issue with the previous time council, and it basically centers around single-family homes being converted into multi-family apartment buildings. The one in my neighborhood more or less resolved itself for a while until very recently when selectivity, people moving into the house. It's again, it's a single-family house. That's how it's owned. All construction was done with no inspections, safety hazards, things of that nature. And I did try to reach out to Kim Nordhoff three times until I finally got a reply. And this is just my personal comment. The replies seem to indicate that not her job. That's it. So I mean, my ask is, and now in my neighborhood again, right on Ridge Road, there's another house, larger house that I'm sure everybody drives by, right on Ridge Road, near the corner of Columbia, that's had construction dumpsters out front for the last two or three months. And low and behold, last weekend, a sign went up that said rooms, plural, for rent. I see this as a huge issue. It affects the property value of the surrounding community. It affects tax base. There are safety issues concerned with whether work is being done by permit and being properly inspected so that we don't create a safety hazard for first responders. There happens to be a fire or something like that in the building. And you know, my thought is that there doesn't seem to be any sort of mechanism in place whereby these issues can be dealt with upstream. It's just kind of, oh, well, somebody did it again. I don't know what we're going to do about it. But I think a lot of people understand that you know, people want to live in Munster. I mean, they do, right? It's a great community, great school district that has, you know, a lot to offer. And I'm totally not against rental properties, but when it's done the correct way. Right? Yes. I mean, there are other homes in my neighborhood where they rent out the entire house and the entire family moves in and there are no issues. So I mean, I would like to see some movement on this past me getting up here and wasting two minutes of your time every month because it doesn't really seem as though anybody's interested in doing anything.
Well, we, Mr. Hanson, we are looking into this and we're looking into it with the state too, because this is a state code issue which supersedes the Munster code. So we are working on this, trust me. I do have your address and everything. I'll get ahold of you when we hear a little bit more. Yeah, I'll be your point.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. Hey, how you doing? Name and address, please.
If you could, then before you speak, pass that sheet to the next person behind you.
Hello, I'm here to talk about the
Name and address, please.
Sorry, I'm Kevin, I'm the A two oh two Jackson Avenue.
Thank you.
About the Sustainability Commission that we were hopefully past day. Um, so last week I went to the wonderful city of Wisconsin. And it was absolutely amazing. Just off the top of my head, there is huge amounts of green spaces everywhere. Almost at every curve, there are trees, native plants, even inside in the middle of the road, medians. There were a lot of plants that increased greenery and there are almost bike lanes in every street. Obviously, it's not a competition and especially since we're capital, it's not a thing. But, um, I think that the Sustainability Commission is the best, I guess, way for us to, for Munster, to improve our quality of life. When I think of the best ways to make a difference, I always go back to the resident. And just recently, I learned that a lot of people do care about this issue and want to make a difference in their community, but just don't know how. The commission will not be a regular meeting. It's supposed to have a table. It's supposed to be open to the public. It's open for discussion. It doesn't, I guess, shout anyone that doesn't have the same beliefs. It includes everyone. And when we're trying to make differences in our community that everyone, it's only fitting that we are the ones that make the decisions. So my point is, we should give the Sustainability Commission a chance because it is truly an outlet for everyone in our community to bring back what the, what the community has given us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I think you'll be happy in about ten minutes. Hey, how you doing?
Hi, good. How are you?
Name, address. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure. Yeah, yeah. So, hi, I am Elise Flutmeyer. I live at eighteen fourteen Augustus Avenue in Munster. Good evening, council members. Thank you again for your time, for allowing this conversation to continue. As a resident and small business owner in Munster, I've had the opportunity to see how much passion and thoughtful, thoughtfulness our community has. And one of the most exciting parts of this journey, talking about the Sustainability Commission, is discovering what's already happening here. And so from businesses making greater choices to people gardening and collecting waste and reusing and reducing waste all on their own. I feel like a formal Sustainable Commission would help us connect all these thoughts and uplift these efforts and create a more visible, coordinated plan that works for everyone in our community. And so this is not just about our environment. It's about the Munster, it's about Munster's health and our future and our reputation. The healthier practices improve the well-being of our residents, especially our youth and our elders. And a sustainability-minded town is more attractive to potential homebuyers and businesses, adding rural and perceived value to our community. So we've looked at successful models in Indiana, looking at Bloomington, Valparaiso, and Highland. And we've engaged with local green businesses and universities and the youth. And we've had great turnout at our Earth Day events for the past three years. So actually, in fact, I would like to really thank the students from Munster High School's Environmental Club and their sponsor, Mr. Baker. Their energy and leadership have been a driving force behind all of this, and it's not just about their future. They're actually creating and shaping it right now, which is wonderful. And so I want you, I want to thank everyone for helping us get this far. And I hope that we can keep working together to ensure that Munster continues to be a town that listens and adapts and leads with heart and intention.
Thank you very much. Thank you. How are you?
Hi. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah, name, address.
My name's Amanda Ernst. I live at two one three three Inner Circle here in Munster. Okay, so as a resident of Munster, I'm not originally from this area like at all, but the reason why I bought a home here a couple of years ago is because of pay it with me, the schools. I think it's a very similar story for a lot of us. But I think that speaks volumes about who we are in the community, right? We invest in our future and we care deeply about giving our kids the best possible start for their future. That same commitment to the future is why I'm here today. Asking the council to consider establishing voting yes for a Sustainability Commission. We could do it. A commission would give us a way to coordinate local efforts to reduce waste, cut carbon emissions, and protect our natural resources. Many Indiana towns, including our neighbors, Highland, et cetera, have residents, businesses, and local governments coming together on common sense sustainability solutions. We can do that same thing here. This isn't just about the environment. It's not about a, you know, a bunch of us coming together and wearing patchouli and, you know, doing the right thing. It's about smart planning. It's about cost savings. It's about healthier neighborhoods. And just like our schools, it's a strong signal that Munster is a place where the vision of the future matters. But thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. Thanks, Bob, yeah.
No, thank you very much for getting up there.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak? Anybody in Mr. Gordon's class? We usually pick one person. So don't look away, because I'm just kidding. So going once, going twice, I'm going to close public comment, and we're going to start with the consent agenda. I need a motion to pass the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion. We got a second. Do we have any discussion on this? No discussion. Wendy, could you please call it over?
Counselor Hawford.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes.
Five two zero.
Okay, we have no old business, new business. Our first one is the bid award for CCMG two thousand and twenty five. Who is going to speak on that behalf? Yeah.
On June twelfth, two thousand and twenty five bids were received for CCMG two five dash one, paving waterman improvements that includes the paving of the roads and waterman projects that we've done in the wildland. Milestone contractors came in as opposed to visit two million, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. That is a recommendation that we received from S H Engineering, and that is who we are looking for approval.
Well, thanks, Bob. Do we have a motion to for this CCMG bid award?
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve Milestone Contractors LP for a total cost of two million, six hundred and twenty-one thousand and seven hundred and four dollars for the CCMG two thousand and twenty-five dash one bid awards as recommended by S H.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion, and I wanted to make a comment. It's nice that they didn't have any cents, you know, for a two million, six hundred thousand dollar contract, and they want thirteen cents.
You can have it in there.
No, 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 it's nice not to have that.
Save any other discussion about this. I would like to again, I I appreciate, we did a little different process this year. We used to have two two different bid amounts for project each year, dash one, dash two. It looks like this is received, again, when costs come in below engineering estimates, that's a real positive thing. Does this was the thought there that we're trying to become more efficient and save on bidding time and maybe even mobilization from from the contractor?
That was part of it, and to get better pricing overall, when you have a bigger package of rubber.
Very good. Well, I applaud staff for thinking about that, becoming more efficient when we start tightening our, you know, belts, you know, pockets here when some of the cost constraints might come into us with the new state funding mechanisms. I do appreciate staff really looking into that and presenting a new option for us. With the amount that's under our total ask from the, from the state, will we be able to do maybe another rotor or something with this? Okay, so, so us becoming more efficient from staff-wise, bidding this out once is a direct result, we'll be able to maybe get additional road resurfaces this, this, but thank you very much. It's a nice thing that staff brought to the council. Much appreciated. Not doing your well, though.
No, I was gonna also make a comment, but I would imagine it's going to be a lot simpler because there's only one contractor that's involved with it and responsible. It's not like, well, he, she, they're pointing every which way as to who's to blame.
That was another concern behind going with one larger package, easier to manage, more efficient, better for staff time, they're able to just stay on top of things better.
Great. Thank you. Any other discussion, comments? With that, Wendy, could you please call it over?
Counselor Hawford.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes, that brings us up to the engagement letter, Baker Tilly, two thousand and twenty-five. Go Bob, who would like to speak on that?
Speak to that. The town every year issues a geo bond, a general obligation bond, and normally we do it completely in-house in terms of the the finance side of it. With the changes, the recent changes that happened in the general assembly, we know that it's impacting directly how bonds will be issued. It looks differently at how they're issued, impact on tax levy, that kind of thing. So we thought it would be smart to work with our financial advisor, Baker Tilly. For this year's bond issue, we will probably split and do instead of the geo bond and the part all being on one, we'll probably split them into two separate bonds. We want to be sure that we structure this in the best way that's, again, most efficient for us. And so this is an engagement letter for them to assist us in determining what is the best way to approach those bonds.
Thank you very much. And with that being said, I have a motion.
I'll make that motion. By motion and roll call vote, approve the letter of engagement with Baker Tilly for the issuance of the two thousand and twenty-five general obligation bond.
I have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second. Do we have any discussion over this? That being said, Wendy.
Counselor Hawford.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Counselor Nellens.
Yes.
Counselor Peterson.
Yes.
Counselor Shinkin.
Yes, that brings us up to a sustainability committee and plan. Mr. Marino.
So before you tonight, it's a resolution creating the Sustainability Committee. This was brought to the town by a few Munster High School students. We had a few meetings with the students, some other school administrators, residents, and members from the town council put together a plan, came up with goals and objectives. The committee will consist of nine members, including three students, three residents, and one member each from the chamber of conference, the town, and school administration. So the general idea with this is that the committee would work to research, educate, implement environmental, environmentally sustainable solutions. So they'll look at a variety of different opportunities, and information to share with the community, get the word out, and try to undertake some initiatives.
Beautiful. Thank you. May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion by motion and roll call vote. Approve resolution two one fifty-four as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second that motion. Do we have any discussion on this?
Mr. President, can you, this is Counselor Peterson. Can you hear?
Can you just hold on a second? Let's get the microphone to you.
Okay.
Well. No, it needs to go by the, maybe by Chief Hyduk.
Where is this?
We don't know.
Go ahead, Jonathan. Jonathan, just, just test us. One, two, three.
One, two, three.
Do any more of them.
One, two, three, testing, testing. One, two, three. One, two, three, testing, testing.
Okay, I think I got you. Right, yes.
One, two, three, testing, testing.
Turn it on.
One, two, three, testing, testing.
Testing, testing.
Testing. Testing, testing. One, two, three. How's that working? Can you hear me all right? Feel like a, like a cell phone commercial? Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
We're looking for the, where the speaker is on the big TV.
Okay. Can you hear, can you hear anything I'm saying?
I know.
So just bear with us.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, this is always
Sustainability, we have engineering committee.
All right, Jonathan.
How about now? Can you hear me now?
No.
All right, we got a high schooler coming up.
Can you hear me now? I'm like, I'm like a Verizon cellphone commercial. Can you hear me now?
Oh, we hear you. Great job.
Can you say something?
Can you hear me now? How's now?
All right.
Test.
Let me mute that and let me see if I can do it through the computer. All right, just a second. We're playing.
Hey, Wendy, how about, how about I call you from another line and you put me on your telephone?
Well, let's, let's try real quick. I'm unmuteing you here, but I gotta get rid of feedback.
Okay.
Don't touch the spot, Mr. Baker.
All right, let's hear you talk now.
How, how does it sound now? Better?
Have him call your phone.
Try again?
How about now? Better?
Yes.
Better.
Will that work?
Yeah, we have a little bit of feedback, but.
Okay, well, I'll try and we'll see how it goes. So, Mr. President, I would like to weigh in on the Sustainability Committee. I am going to vote yes on this committee. I heard comments from our fellow counselors, particular Counselor Nellens, where he, he offered the thought that if they can come up with good ideas, why not? Let's give it a shot. But I'd like to offer some counsel to this committee to avoid some of the mistakes that we have experienced here in town. And I've got three points to make on that. So one of the more recent mistakes that we made with sustainability is the infamous Beverly Weed Patch. This was an area in the north side of town. It was a two-block section of town on Beverly Place between State Line and Holman. And what we experienced was the, it was an old parkway where we tore out the grass and the old growth trees and we installed what were called native grasses. Well, it turns out for many of the people up there, they called them weeds. That's why we got the name Beverly Weed Patch. And just like weeds, what happened was these grasses grew to four to five feet high up to your armpits. Then we had wild animals nesting and dying in the, in the weed patch. And then it went to seed and all the neighborhood got to experience the weeds themselves. And not surprisingly, it created an uproar in the community. And when it was all said and done, after the residents played in, what we learned from this is that when you're making substantial changes to the environment and to the neighborhood, you need to have substantial community buy-in. And we did not poll the neighborhood. We did it afterwards, and we learned from the residents that they were more than satisfied with the current condition of the parkway, and we ended up turning it back. Okay, Wendy, you hear me okay?
Uh, we're doing, we're hearing you okay. The audience is having a little, they're a little iffy, but we're doing okay.
Okay, next. We have learned that sustainability can be a lot of things to a lot of folks, and we've had another project that I've heard characterized as sustainability for some of the attributes, which is the Ridge Road Lane Reduction Proposal. And we've learned some lessons from that proposal. And the lesson we learned from that was that you need to get your public safety officials engaged early on in the process. Something that you may think is A-OK, we could learn later that our public safety officers, our police or fire or our public works people might have serious issues. And we learned that with the Ridge Road Lane Reduction Proposal. And in fact, what's worse, this proposal was never brought to our public safety officials during the planning stage. And we only learned later that it suffered from serious safety problems related to the effects on emergency vehicles or traffic in neighborhoods and other things such as the volume of traffic on Ridge Road. So that's my second suggestion to this group is make sure that whatever you're proposing, after you've gotten the community buy-in, it, it works with our public safety officials. Sometimes the most innocuous changes can have substantial effects and and I promise you, our chiefs, Chief Shekel, Chief Hyduk, and our Public Safety Director, Bob Veloy, they're very friendly. They'll be happy to work with you and they'll candidly tell you what their thoughts are on a proposal. And that leads to our final suggestion, the cost. Costs are very important. Money doesn't grow on trees, and what we have found is that there is no free money. And with that Beverly Weed Patch proposal, it ended up costing the town, from what I can tell, a couple hundred thousand dollars to turn that parkway back to what the residents expected. And if you think about it, that money could have been used to fix potholes, to repair streets, and to do preventative maintenance. And if anybody thinks that preventative maintenance is not important, all you have to do is ask the, ask the folks that live on Franlin who are suffering the consequences of the lack of preventative maintenance on the Forty-Fifth Street Bridge. That bridge, which has been maintained and built by the county, clearly did not have sufficient preventive maintenance because the repair work that's being done was initially planned to be one lane at a time to keep Forty-Fifth open. And they learned after they got into it that the the damage to the bridge and the decay to the bridge was so substantial that they had to take the bridge completely out of service. And now we've had all this traffic rerouted all around Munster in a way that has been extremely disruptive. And the same thing with the Ridge Road proposal. Everybody talks about how we got a grant for seventeen and a half million dollars, but what they don't really talk about is the other side of that. The cost to the town of five to ten million dollars. And candidly, we have seen.
Is not five to ten million dollars. You've been told that before. And what does this have to do with sustainability?
Well, again.
You've been on this subject with the sustainability, Jonathan.
Let me, let, let me finish up, please. So I, I, I encourage this committee to do good for the town, and I'm confident it will. But I, my counsel to this committee is to focus and make sure that whatever proposals you bring back to this council, you make sure that you have gotten significant public buy-in from the people that will be affected by it. You check with our public safety officials to make sure that we don't have any public safety concerns. And you weigh and measure the cost that it will pose on the town, and you balance those costs with any effects that it might have on other services. So with that, I wish the committee the best of luck, and I pass back to the chair.
Thank you. Look, give me a minute to switch the microphones around here.
Yeah, the other discussion. I know we want to say some, I I I am very. Uh I look forward to working with this committee, uh this committee i- is.
Wendy, I can't hear.
There we go.
Through the series of three meetings that we've had with the the residents, the students. Um we've seen a great. Uh energy of community engagement and what Mister Peterson is talking about is this group is truly about engaging the community to talk about. The future and the benefits of Munster. I do think there's certain things that are happening right now in the town of Munster that are sustainable. And that we need to promote and we need to acknowledge and we need to recognize and celebrate that the town of Munster is currently doing some sustainable things. Are there other things that the town of Munster can be doing? That's another thing that we could be doing, so that's what this committee is all about. So I'm very happy that that we had the series of meetings, I'm very happy that we've included. Uh residents and and the school town of Munster is looking forward to addressing this at their upcoming meeting. And also the Chamber of Commerce, so this is fully an inclusive group and we certainly think this is one of the first steps. That we can s- that we can take to fully engage our community and fully engage our community into serious discussions. About different things of the future of the town of Munster.
And I'm looking forward to being part of this committee, I mean, I. I gotta applaud the students over there, they're bringing our community back together and I thank you very much, that's what we need here. We we need, we need younger um leadership that could. You know, tell us us old bros that we're doing it wrong, yeah, I'm old. And I'm looking forward, I really am, and good luck, I I hope you come back from Wisconsin and continue to come these, you know, meetings. Um when my Hoosiers play Wisconsin, I, that's the only time I'm alive, you know. But other, anybody else?
Yeah, I I would, go ahead. I would say real quick, as I I did, I I attend all the meetings and I was really pleased at the way all the meetings developed. From the beginning while we were kinda, I felt like we were kinda just chasing our tails to, by the third meeting, we were, we actually had an agenda, we had. Ideas and I I I'm excited for the launch of this committee and I think that having this think tank with youth and with some experience. And people coming together, I think it's gonna make a big difference and I think that it's not gonna be any harm to this town, but it's gonna be an absolute boon to this town. And I think people are gonna rally around it when we start coming up with some ideas that like, boy, that's not so hard, it's not gonna, you know. Like I think one of you guys said before that, uh you know, we're not taking your, uh I think Mister Baker said it, we're not, you know, we're not taking your freedoms, we're just trying to make things better. And I think that's a huge thing, so. I'm happy.
Mister President, I just wanna reiterate that I certainly stand by this, I think this committee is a very good thing. And my comment was, give them a chance. Let's see what we can do, give them the chance and we'll form that committee.
Yeah, looking forward to it. And with that, Wendy, let's call a vote.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Shinkin?
Yes. Five all.
Congratulations.
Okay, next. We still have some work to do. We have the contract approval for Robinson Forensics.
Mister President, I would make a motion to approve the engagement letter with Robson Incorporated Forensics. For expert witness service on a time and expense basis and a payment of three thousand dollars as a retainer.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Do we have discussion over this? With that, Wendy, please call a vote.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Shinkin?
Yes, that brings us our last of the new business, contract approval Axon body cameras for the police department. And then.
Your presentation.
The chief in here is. Yeah, please, can you?
Here's the microphone, let's do that.
Yeah, just a little thing, what it's about, all that stuff, keep it quick.
Okay, it's time for us to read our contract with Axon, yes. Uh we get, I gave you guys a presentation, we had some needs with Axon. They're our our major technology group that we use for body cams, smart squad or cameras, meters. Evidence dot com, where we keep all of our digital evidence and stuff like that and we share information with the public and all that stuff. So we're getting ready to a ten-year contract with them, we got some pretty good, pretty good pricing and schedule with them, I believe, uh pretty competitive. And we're getting a lot of great enhancements such as A I and some um virtual training.
That's huge.
And uh some other virtual crime center stuff, so very exciting um for me, because it's been, since we're working on it for a few months now. Um with with town council and the and the other members of the town and so.
Well, thank you for the presentation and with that, I need a motion to approve this contract.
I'll make this motion, by motion and roll call vote, authorize the town of Munster to enter into a contract with Axon Enterprise. For the O S P ten plus with A I ten-year bundle for four million ninety-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars. Fifty-seven cents.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second, discussion, please.
Again, I I think this is a very important thing to do and I I do support it, I do think. Uh it is one of these necessary uh evils that we have to spend this money to have the necessary um technology, keep our police force to where it's at. Uh unfortunately, though, that technology comes with a cost. And and we are gonna be, you know, again, the costs are gonna become greater importance as we move along. With the general assembly, how they're restricting the town's expenses. And as we heard from Mister Peterson, money doesn't grow on trees. And so we have, you know, this is about a hundred fifty thousand dollars more than we have spent the last couple of years. Um and I and I do think we have to be very careful and hopefully. This type of contract will will create some efficiencies maybe within the police department. That we can look to, you know, tighten our belt in other ways, not to reduce the efficiency of the department. But also just to kind of control some costs, so uh again, I I certainly think it's an important thing that we need to do. I I'm glad that in in a strange sort of way, the ten-year commitment also guarantees what our costs are for the next ten years, so that's a, that that is a positive. But again, I I I do look for, hopefully that this creates some efficiencies that we can experience later on when we start talking about budget.
Well, I think it'll create some efficiencies with the new A I generated reporting now. I think they're not gonna be spending hours on their computer typing everything in when they could talk it in and. Bingo, five minutes later, we got a report and then it'll go into the clouds, so I saw you raise your hands. So I I just wanna point out that it was several years ago that the council approved body cameras. Uh we had had the squad car cameras, but then we approved the body camera. From a a legal standpoint, um I understand that it was a big ask, right? In terms of the financial ask, but I can tell you in terms of the cases that we handle for the town and its officers. It's invaluable and I I I didn't get a chance to uh with Damon sit down and and figure out the cost savings from a liability standpoint. But we've got it on video, right, like and we have the audio and we know. And and there are a couple cases I'm sure you all are aware of where, had I not had the video evidence. It would have been a much more costly case to defend. So, yes, it's a big ask in terms of the financial output. But you are experiencing cost savings by the technology, we've all, you know. Since we got the body cameras, we've certainly been on the on the front end of this and this is puts you. On the cutting edge of all the technology and and there is a a significant savings. When it comes to me and what I do when you have this.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mister Mister President, I I I, Mister President, I would like to weigh in, I I support this proposal and I have. Echo what the attorney has said, um I have had experience with the invaluable benefits of A I. Uh uh machines as as they are, when they are integrated into my practice of law. One of the things that I learned when I was talking with members of the apartment, uh one of the benefits that I uh. They they've shared with me that they think they'll be able to obtain is if they pull somebody over that doesn't speak English as their native language, the A I. Might be able to translate into that person's native language, so it it makes field interactions for our officers safer. And more productive and that is one of many benefits that I anticipate we're gonna see. And I think that that is uh that that's that's an excellent reason why this is something that makes sense. Uh the public safety is a core component of municipal government and I think this is, this is a good investment that we're making tonight.
Thank you very much, Dave.
I just wanted to comment that in the presentation, uh Axon indicated if they. As they had new developments and refinements in the program, that they would be added on to our. Our uh operation with that, no additional costs, because we're making this big commitment upfront, I think it makes sense. And to have one source and it's good to have a ten-year program.
Well, thank you very much, and with that being said. Please call a vote.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Shinkin?
Yes, that brings us up to reports, does anybody have a report?
Thank you, um just briefly, a few weeks ago, the town participated in the Shared Ethics Advisory. Uh dinner that was geared toward boards and commissions, I was there as well as two members of our board of safety and. Two members of our park board, so it was good to see that and we're members of that group and we're. You know, it was good to see the participation that we had.
Thank you, any other reports?
I just wanna make sure everybody's aware, tomorrow night is the official first concert for the Munster Civic Foundation out at Centennial, Centennial Park. Concert is six thirty and I should know who the band is, but I don't, so I apologize for that as well. And that's, it's not a very good one, but and then uh this upcoming Friday are also two musical uh Friday night and Saturday night. Music at Centennial Park, so you're certainly welcome to attend those. And I just also wanna remind the park board or the town council that we have a joint meeting this Wednesday with the park board. To talk about some shared facility usage with the school town.
Do we have any portfolio reports?
Maybe that's.
I think we just need to go over.
I was out of line, sorry.
Announcements, all town council meetings will begin at six thirty unless otherwise noted, our next regular uh town council meeting will be July seven. At six thirty, could I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second that motion, uh all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that brings us up to. A short, three-minute meeting for the redevelopment commission. And with that, I'd like to welcome everybody to the redevelopment commission and regular meeting of Monday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. At seven fifteen P M, Wendy, you please call for.
Commissioner Hopper?
Here.
Commissioner Gardner?
Here.
Commissioner Nellens?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
And Commissioner Shinkin?
Here, and with that, we're gonna have public comment and this has to be for redevelopment commission only. All public comment is limited to two minutes with a total of twenty minutes allotted for public comment segment. All speakers must sign the, public speakers sign in form prior to speaking. Please keep all comments civil, constructive and related public policy issues. At their discretion, the commission may allow public comment to extend past twenty minutes, but not required to do so. All rules for public comment are posted outside the main meeting room. And with this redevelopment commission. Public comment only. Going once. Going twice, unclosing public comment, uh consent agenda, I need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Do we have any discussion? That being said, Wendy, you please call a vote.
Commissioner Hopper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Shinkin?
Yes, we have no old business, no new business, any reports?
Yes, just for the record, um our liaison to the school board, John Castro, was not here tonight.
Thank you.
I did send that over here.
Um announcements, our next redevelopment commission meeting will be that July seventh. And right following the uh town council meeting. That, I need a motion for adjournment.
Still moved.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close the meeting, thank you, everybody.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, who needs pictures?